You can sit if you want. Your staff, it's either way, just whatever you...
Waiting for Jim.
Members to the dais, please. You can call him to order.
Just go ahead and call.
Order.
Call him.
I'll call to order this meeting of the Common Council of Bloomington. Special session for...
Can we hit that button? Turn the mute off. Do you see it there?
What about the top row? It's one that's the wrong color.
I think we're live. Okay, I'll try this again. We'll call to order this meeting of the Common Council special session for Wednesday, January 23rd, 2019. And this is a meeting, a special session to consider Resolution 1901. If you need an agenda, by the way, you'll find them beside Nicole Bolden on her desk, the city clerk. This is to adopt the city's transportation plan as an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, along with other business of the council. So with that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Member Ruff?
Here.
Chopra?
Here.
Pete Mount Smith?
Here.
Granger?
Present.
Rallo?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Sims?
Present.
Sterbaum?
Here.
Sandberg?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to agenda summation. As I said, this was Resolution 1901 to adopt the city's transportation plan as an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. And we will be hearing this evening the executive summary, Chapter 1, the introduction, and then Chapter 2, the state of transportation in Bloomington. Then we'll go to other business to consider for the council. We'll go to council schedule before we recess, because these will be series of meetings in order to hear the entire plan. So we're only hearing part of the plan this evening. So with that, let's go to the introduction.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to adopt a special procedure for the hearing of Resolution 1901.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
If I may just make, read the motion. I propose that we deliberate on 1901 as follows. That planning and transportation staff will present the relevant portion of the plan. Council members may then ask questions relevant to that portion for response that evening or at a later time. We will have public comment, where members may speak once and for no more than five minutes on each, at each opportunity. And lastly, council members may ask further questions, comment, and take whatever actions are in order. We will consider the adoption of the plan in Seriatim, where we will hear it over the course of several meetings, as if it were one meeting. Amendments may be made, but they must be sponsored by council members. Members of the public may author amendments, but again, they must be submitted to a council member for sponsorship. And that those amendments, regardless of who sponsors or writes the amendments, they all must be in writing, and they must be submitted no later than noon on February 13th.
Thank you. That was a motion. We need first to introduce the legislation. Is that correct?
No.
No.
Do we?
Council attorney?
You need to say that you're now considering resolution and...
Well, then I'll withdraw the motion temporarily. Like, I move, I forgot my duties. Mr. Chair, I move that Resolution 1901 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
All in favor?
That we introduce Resolution 1901. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 1901 to adopt the city's transportation plan as an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution adopts the city's 2018 transportation plan as an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. This proposed City of Bloomington transportation plan replaces the existing bicycle and pedestrian transportation and greenway system plan, as well as the master thoroughfare plan, known as Part 5 of the Growth Policies Plan. The transportation plan builds on the goals of the comprehensive plan. It includes information about street typologies, right-of-way widths, pedestrian facilities, bicycle facilities, new street connections, and other transportation-related projects.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that Resolution 1901 be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I move the motion that I described before we introduce the legislation.
Second.
Statement of procedure. Very good. We will, all in favor of the motion?
Well, is there a discussion?
Is this the...
Again, that we're going to hear the resolution over the next three Wednesdays consecutively, and that by the fourth Wednesday, by February 13th, or I take it back, that this Wednesday, next Wednesday, and the Wednesday after, we're going to hear portions of the plan. And then on the 13th, amendments to the plan will be due. And the procedure we use is mostly the same, but we're just formalizing it.
Okay. So questions and comments? Is that correct?
Information that...
Yes.
Closer, please.
When you adopt the motion, it will be placed online. We have a web page for the transportation plan. It includes the schedule already. It includes amendment form. And once you adopt something, this will also go up there, so someone can read it online.
Where will be able to find that page online?
It's on the council webpage under, it's called Transportation Plan. It's in a box at the bottom of the front page.
So people who want to see the plan and the amendments online can visit Bloomington.in.gov/council?
Yes, and then go to the box that says Transportation Plan.
And click on that box?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Are there questions or comments?
Are there any?
Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that we will be hearing amendments to the document, and amendments do have to have a council member sponsor them. So if any member of the public feels like there's something in the plan that needs to be amended, please reach out to either council@bloomington.in.gov or a specific council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on the motion? I wanted to add that regarding the public, public comments, I'd like to proceed in this fashion, that we, by, after each chapter or each heading on the agenda, executive summary, Chapter 1 and Chapter 2, we'll allow time for public comment on that particular chapter. Okay? So, yes.
Mr. Sherman, is there any content regarding the transportation plan on the council website now?
Could you repeat your...
Is there any content regarding this plan on the council website as we speak?
Yes.
Content, yes. The copy of the plans there.
Okay, so people can go now, right now, and click and follow along.
That's correct. I just accessed it myself from the council webpage.
Much obliged. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. So with that, we will, do we need a roll call on the motion? Okay. Clerk Bolden, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion for procedure is adopted 9-0. So we will now go to the review of the transportation plan. And joining us this evening is Beth Rosenbarger, transportation planner. Would you like to begin?
Thank you. Beth Rosenbarger with the Planning and Transportation Department. I am the Planning Services Manager and here to talk for 20 to 30 minutes or more. I actually outlined the council process as well, just to be sure people understand when the meetings are. Obviously, this evening, next week, we're focusing on Chapter 3, which is, well, has a lot of content that we will go over. And then on February, Wednesday, February 6th, we will talk about the rest of the plan and the remaining sections, Chapters 4 through 6, as stated and as on the council's website. There's an option to submit amendments, and it requires a council member to sponsor them, and those are due February 13th by noon. And then we are meeting again February 27th to review those amendments that get sponsored and hopefully adopt this plan. So in terms of my presentation this evening, now I'm not sure if this isn't allowed, but I outlined it in a slightly different format, that I wanted to start with a bit of a transportation overview and some connections. I'm going to talk about the comprehensive plan, and then I'm going to break down the parts of the plan that we're talking about this evening. It will seem odd, but I am going in the order of Chapter 1, Chapter 2, and the executive summary last. The rationale here is there's actually kind of a narrative arc with it, and the executive summary is a great jumping-off point for our meeting next week, because it focuses on the key projects and changes in the plan that we aren't diving into as much tonight. Is, can maybe somebody nod? Is that okay?
That sounds like a good approach.
Okay.
I don't think, is there any questions? Okay, very good.
Okay. And then if you want to stop me at some point for breaks for public comment, I can pause at each section to see about that. So I wanted to start just really big picture, because I deal with transportation all the time in my job, but not everybody deals with it all the time or thinks about it as much as we love to here in Bloomington. So when we talk about transportation and when we talk about streets, we're talking about a lot of overarching concepts that impact different levels and different, impact all of us in different ways in the community. First of all, we are talking about access. We're talking about access to jobs, to your family, to grocery, to housing, to services, to schools, to parks, anything from A to B, and how you can get there in our community. We are talking about equity. Who has access? What are the costs of transportation, both for the individual, for the household, and for our community? And there are different things that weigh in on that, in terms of our proximity to goods and services, to transit, and to different transportation options, which are not equally present throughout the community. We are talking... Kazuntai. We are also talking about affordability, and this is discussed in the comp plan, comprehensive plan as well, that often we discuss housing affordability, but transportation affordability is a necessary component in that equation, because if your home costs less, but your transportation costs more, they're just offsetting each other in some cases. We are also talking about public health, and this is coming to the forefront more in transportation planning in current dialogue. We know that increased physical activity is good for us, and that transit use, walking, bicycling, access to trails, and using those as transportation can help improve overall public health throughout the community. We also know that heart disease is the leading cause of death in the United States. One in four deaths is because of heart disease, and that is from the CDC, Center for Disease Control. From the Center for Disease Control website, it talks about prevention, and in their Division of Nutrition, Physical Activity, and Obesity, two big highlights were increasing physical activity access and outreach, and designing streets and communities for physical activity. So this will be a lot of what we're talking about, designing streets and communities for physical activity, and that involves planners, architects, the public, elected officials, et cetera, to make sure we can support physical activity with the design of our spaces. And I'm going to break into some fun data about this as well. There's no way, probably, to take all of this in in a short time period, but I couldn't help using some maps and census data. So when we talk about affordability, we of course also are talking about median household income and how that impacts different areas of the community. This is relevant, because transportation is a household expense and at times not insignificant. And depending on your income, transportation can contribute to a higher percentage of your overall income based on your transportation costs in Bloomington. So this is a really interesting map that we don't see that much. This data comes from the U.S. Department of Labor, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and this is based on census block group, and it's the transportation average spending by household in Bloomington. So based on the different block groups, so the two lowest categories are $0 to $3,000 and $3,000 to $6,000 per year spent on transportation, and there are no block groups where that applies. The kind of light teal is the one we see most throughout Bloomington, and that's $6,000 to $9,000 average per household within each of those census block groups. Then the two darker shades of blue, can do this probably here, are in the $9,000 to $12,000 range, so that is annually how much a household is spending on transportation. And then the darkest blue is $12,000 to about $15,000. So it is very interesting, and I didn't know how to do this in a map, but to compare that, and we can consider this, when you look at the median household income and can do a percentage of what, how much of that is actually going to transportation. We also have in our community a lot... Households with no vehicles. And by this, by vehicles, they mean motor vehicles, where the people in the house can use them for day-to-day life, not necessarily a work vehicle that's not supposed to be used for personal trips. So these, in the downtown, actually Core is the darkest shade of red there, where more than 20% of the households have zero vehicles. In this northwest area, we can see 15, between 15 and 20% of households do not have a vehicle, and the same is true in this area, on the kind of south-central part of Bloomington. And these two areas adjacent to the downtown core, 10 to 15% of households do not have a vehicle at home. But what is also interesting is we can look at households with one vehicle. And this, you know, a lot of households are about two people in Bloomington, so this is considered a half-vehicle per person, so with a family relying on one vehicle for the household, or with anybody relying on one vehicle per household. So the light seafoam color is 25 to 50% of the households in that census block group have one vehicle. So that's obviously outside of this, where there were no vehicles, so on top of that percentage, we have a lot of households with one vehicle per family. And then the light blue is 50% to 75%. So within those census block groups of the households there, above 50% have one vehicle per household. That's the end of my fun map section. So just to wrap up some of our transportation connections, also when we're talking about this, we are talking about climate change, greenhouse gas emissions, particulate matter, the energy source for our vehicles, et cetera. That's actually not my specialty, but trying to just help connect some of our dots. We are talking about public space. Streets are our largest public space in terms of total land area. We do forget that a lot. And land use, not surprising. The design and use of our streets shapes the built environment, and the built environment shapes the design and use of our streets. It's, they're very interconnected. And more. I'm open to if I forgot some, and you all want to suggest some more connections. So then I'm moving to our next category.
Is it Chapter 2?
It's not. I haven't even gotten to the chapters yet. Okay. Okay. So we're going to talk a lot about the comprehensive plan at this meeting as well. The comprehensive plan, we know the transportation plan is an amendment to the comprehensive plan, and it builds on the vision, goals, and suggested policies that were adopted with the comprehensive plan. I'm going to go through some of the vision statement guiding principles that are connected to these ideas of transportation in our community. When we talk about access, we do have a vision statement guiding principle connected to this, that we want to, as a community, provide a safe, efficient, accessible, and connected system of transportation that emphasizes public transit, walking, and biking, to enhance options to reduce our overall dependence on the automobile. For equity, we want to fortify our strong commitment to equality, acceptance, openness, and public engagement. We want to meet basic needs and ensure self-sufficiency for all residents. And we want to invest in diverse, high-quality economic development that provides equitable job opportunities to our residents, supports entrepreneurial, small-business climate, enhances the community's role as a regional hub, and is responsive towards larger concerns of sustainability. There's more. Affordability. I would connect this with, we want to, as a community, offer a wide variety of quality housing options for all incomes, ages, and abilities. Of course, transportation is related, since we want to be able to connect to those quality housing options. We want to embrace all of our neighborhoods as active and vital community assets that need essential services, infrastructure assistance, historic protection, and access to small-scaled mixed-use centers. For public health and public space, we want to encourage healthy lifestyles by providing high-quality public places, green spaces, and parks, and an array of recreational activities and events. And we want to celebrate our rich eclectic blend of arts, culture, and local businesses. For climate change, I would say we connect that with transportation and the vision statement, with we want to nurture a resilient, environmentally responsible community by judiciously using scarce resources, enhancing our natural assets, protecting our historic resources, and supporting a vital local food system. Almost there. And for land use, this is connected to a lot of them, but to not repeat any we've already done, we want to nurture our vibrant and historic downtown as the flourishing center of the community. We want to ensure all land development activity makes a positive and lasting community contribution, and we want to enhance the community's role as a regional economic hub. So that is the connection to the vision statement, which is the beginning of the comprehensive plan and was passed in 2013 by the council. Then the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2018 and has a specific transportation chapter. So there are goals in that chapter. We're just going to touch on those goals, and then we'll move into Chapter 1. So the focus with our transportation plan that we tried to ask throughout the process is, does the plan support the goals of the comprehensive plan? So Goal 6.1, increase sustainability, improve the sustainability of the transportation system. Goal 6.2, improve public transit, maintain, improve, and expand an accessible, safe, and efficient public transportation system. 6.3, improve the bicycle and pedestrian network, maintain, improve, and expand an accessible, safe, and efficient network for pedestrians, and attain platinum status as a bicycle-friendly community as rated by the League of American Bicyclists. 6.4, prioritize non-automotive modes, continue to integrate all modes into the transportation network, and to prioritize bicycle, pedestrian, public transit, and other non-automotive modes to make our network equally accessible, safe, and efficient for all users. 6.5, protect neighborhood streets. Protect neighborhood streets that support residential character and provide a range of location, trans, I think it's, a range of local transportation options. Goal 6.6, optimize public space for parking. Plan and develop parking for cars and bicycles with a focus on efficiency and equity. And Goal 6.7, educate the public. Increase residents' safe use of transportation options that minimize negative environmental and infrastructure impacts. So that's my wrap-up of the comp plan, because we want to use that as a starting point for our transportation plan discussion. So for Chapter 1 of the transportation plan, we're going to discuss the purpose of the plan, the development of the transportation plan process, actually should just be said, the transportation plan process, and want to address what about transit and the way we address transit in the plan.
Before you continue, Ms. Rosenbarger, can, we'd like to go to council questions, I think, for what you've covered so far. See if we do have any questions. Are there questions from council on this introduction? Councilmember Volin?
Well, first, it's a procedural question. So was that the executive summary, or is this all executive, was this all the Chapter 1 presentation?
That was not the executive summary. The executive summary is actually last in this presentation.
Right. So this is all part of your Chapter 1 presentation?
What I've already done?
Yeah.
I would say it's just a foundation. It's not part of the plan, but about what got us here.
Okay, I understand that. The one question I had was about the slide you showed about the cost of transportation, where it seems like the average around Bloomington is the figure that I've heard, that $6,000 to $9,000 a year is spent by the average household on transportation. Could you dig into that number just a little bit? I mean, that's what, car payments, gasoline repairs, that's public transit, that's bicycles, what, where are people spending that money on? How reliable is that data for, I mean, do we really think that Bloomingtonians spend that much money a year on transportation?
Yes. So in terms of reliability, it does come from the, let me get to it. From the U.S. Department of Labor and the Bureau of Labor Statistics, from a consumer expenditure survey in 2015. I think it is reliable. I would have to, I did read through some of the metadata available for it, but I could dig in a little bit more and would have to follow up about what costs all are included. I do think you're correct. My assumption would be, yes, car payments. It had information about percentage of household leasing vehicles, different data like that that was very detailed that you could break out separately. So I think it would include car payments, maybe estimates of gasoline based on vehicle type and travel distances.
The other surprise I have is the very, very pale yellow-green that are on the periphery of the city. You see holes, these are people who are spending $3,000 or less a year. Is there any way to explain? Yeah, down there, way up there, there's a big, big yellow area, the north side, out of the west side. Are they just parks? But if there are people living there, you know, they're reporting, like, the ECIU is grayed out, because it's, you know, they don't have that data. How might you explain those light-green areas where they're spending very little on transport?
It's actually easier to see on my screen. Those areas are all hatched and are not consistent with the legend. So like, the northern area is Lake Griffey.
Oh, okay.
And it's just labeled as Lake Griffey. This one would be Leonard Springs Park.
You explained it, then?
Yes. So I believe they're all parks, except this one, which I'm not sure about.
Okay. No, that helps a lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Rosenbarger, just to clarify regarding this analysis, was the transportation spending, did it include, I mean, this wasn't just local spending. I mean, suppose it was plane trips or travel, I mean, outside of the community? Was that included as well? Was it total? When you say total transportation, what does that mean? Does it mean total transportation within the community, or does it mean total transportation spending per household, including my trip to Hawaii, or something like that?
I'll really actually have to verify, because I don't, I don't know that.
All right.
Thanks.
Okay, that would be good to know. Other questions from council? Councilmember Chopra?
Yes, you outlined some goals, and I wanted to ask if now would be the appropriate time to discuss those, or if you want to do that more in detail later. Ms. Rosenbarger, yeah, the goals that you mentioned just now, I mean, I know that, I'm sure those goals are listed in a chapter or elsewhere.
So those are the goals that were already in the comprehensive plan. So they are not, I think they are referenced in the transportation plan.
I understand.
But they're not broken down in it. So it was more to just highlight those and remind us about them. But I'm happy to also answer questions about them, too.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
I just wanted to request that we get a copy of the slides.
Perfect, yes.
Thank you.
And perhaps, could we have them on our website, so the public can view them as well? Other questions? Okay, let's go to the public. If public has any comments on what you've seen so far, please step up. Don't be shy. Do we have a sign-in sheet? Clerk Bolden? Okay. Please sign in. State your name.
Mark...
Mark Cornet. That's the golf course.
Thank you.
Couple of the slides are interesting. I think that really dark red about around the downtown covers an area that actually there's not very much homeownership. So I'm really curious about how that data is relatable as well. One of the things that's interesting to me in the information presented so far is talking about outcomes. And, you know, the comprehensive plan is ideas. The transportation plan is a lot of ideas. And I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of, and I know we'll talk about implementation later, but talking about how our community really works in relationship to transportation. Think if you do, if you do some homework, you'll find that Bloomington isn't dense enough to actually have a transit system. It's very inefficient. It's subsidized heavily. So, and I could go on. But, so that's, that's always a concern. It's a laudable goal and a laudable idea. And platinum bicycle, I would argue some of the same things of chasing a status as opposed to how things really work in our community is sometimes, those lines don't match up. But mostly I want to talk about the concept of the pedestrian as it relates to this plan. And I think one of the things that binds all of us in this room together, if we're ambulatory, is that we're all pedestrians. And that's where all of us start, whether we go to our car, whether we go to get on our bicycle or however, or we go to get on transit. We start out as pedestrians. And I think unfortunately, that's always the most overlooked component of this as well. I watch a lot of people in town and have a hard time getting across Third Street, have a hard time getting across College Mall Road. And sometimes you might even consider asking someone along the mall if they're walking, if they need help because something must be wrong, that they're in this environment trying to cross from, say, Red Lobster to Barnes and Noble. And I want to make sure that we keep this thing grounded and goals are great, but what are we implementing? And particularly, I want to mention that we've taken our pedestrian projects and then turned them, and turned them into Parks and Recs projects. When we redid West Kirkwood, or excuse me, East Kirkwood for the umpteenth time, it was handled by Parks and Rec. When we redid South Walnut between Second and Third, it was, ended up being handled by Parks and Rec. And we're treating our sidewalks and we're treating our pedestrian environments like they're some sort of a beauty contest and a postcard for trying to explain that Bloomington is a nice place to come and visit as opposed to really looking at what happens on those sidewalks. And being able to sit on the sidewalk as a cafe, being able to walk unencumbered by curb cuts, et cetera. And I'm hoping that at some point along this process, and I think from a design perspective always, I'm hoping that we're going to see some tests or some implementation strategies for how to do some of these things. I think a lot of times we're surprised at when people come in and actually present the projects and we scramble to find out if they match up with the goals and the policies. I just hope that we somehow could look from the bottom up sometime as opposed to from the top down and come up with some strategies to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornet. Is there other public comment so far? Please step to the microphone and introduce yourself. Sign in.
My name's Bella Harrison. I'm a student at IU University. You mentioned public health being one of the goals and improving that in ways. And you talked about biking and walking and how that's an important part, and I completely agree. But something that needs to happen for that to really be effective is the amount of cold weather equipment that the city of Bloomington has. Because in times like these, when it's snowy and icy out, I find that the sidewalks and the paths that we're supposed to be walking on are almost impossible to get from point A to point B without tripping and falling. It's really hard to get around in the cold already because of the weather. But you add into that different patches of ice, black ice in particular, when it gets a little dark. That's just asking people to hurt themselves. And it deters people from going outside and walking and doing the healthier thing for short distances because it is so difficult and especially for those who lack balance or coordination or have physical ailments that make it difficult for them to get around already. In cold weather and in ice and snow, it's almost impossible. And if we're going to have public health as a priority, which I completely believe it should be, it needs to be a priority for everyone. And you need to be able to think about the different barriers that people have in different seasons to have public health and to prevent disease and obesity and diabetes and all those great things that physical activity does. And increasing the amount of salt, plows, shoveling. I'm not completely well-versed on different snow handling equipment, but increasing that would be a great way to ensure that everyone gets the opportunity to take advantage of the many sidewalks and paths that Bloomington does have. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Harrison, I think, is that right? Other comment from public? Okay, seeing no other public comments, we'll go back to council for comments, final comment. Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, just a few points, mostly on order. Again, just to remind everyone, this is the beginning of a long process. We're taking up a plan that is going to be the thing we look to for many years to come. So we don't do this very often. That's why we're taking three whole weeks just to hear the presentation of the plan. Ms. Rosenbarger has just begun presenting. I do want to caution everyone that it's appropriate to only address your comments to the chair. We don't want anyone addressing any other particular person in the chamber. We're all considering this issue and not any personal issues. And finally, you know, like, again, she's got a lot to present. So I would urge everyone to keep in mind that when they get up to speak, that they speak to what has just been presented as strictly as possible, even though I'm aware that there are some people who won't be able to attend every week's meeting. So I don't want to discourage anyone to speak. I just want to make sure that those aspects are clear to everyone who is attending either at home or in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilmember Ruff?
Mr. Chair, I was initially going to make a comment about this, but now that I think about it, I'd rather, with your approval, Ashley make my comment, just a question for Ms. Rosenbarger.
Sure.
In the, in your initial points you made in your presentation, you talk about the concepts of access, equity and affordability, among other things. I noticed mobility wasn't one of those. And so I'm wondering if you might compare and contrast access versus mobility or say if you meant the same, they mean the same thing in this context, or can you talk about that for just a minute?
Sure. I'll say I'm influenced on the way I learned this in school. So when I say accessibility, I generally mean still the ability to get to places and that in my background encompasses mobility. And I'm not totally sure, well, and then in, in my training, we talked about usually, it was almost, let's see, like the connotation of mobility for a long time was that it was about moving quickly and not necessarily how you get there and the different options for getting there. So sometimes it was at the cost of accessibility, which is a little weird. But, so I think when I reference access and the ability to get places, the goal is to include multiple modes, but to include your ability to get there, which to me includes mobility. Does that make sense?
Well, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Other council comment or questions? Okay, I'll just say that I really appreciate the public input. I think those were very good points to consider and to consider as we proceed. So with that, Ms. Rosenbarger, you could continue with chapter one.
Sure.
I think.
Okay, so for, also for most of these presentations, I'm trying to include parts of the plan, but I'm of course not including all of it because it's a great read. I encourage everybody to read the whole thing with a highlighter. You're going to love it. So I'm trying, so right now for chapter one, I'm just going to address the purpose of the transportation plan, the process that has led us to where we are today, and a question about transit and how it appears in the plan. So the transportation plan fulfills a state requirement to have what's called a master thoroughfare plan. It's a requirement in the state code that states the comprehensive plan must contain a statement of policy for the development of public ways, public places, public lands, public structures and public utilities. So that's from our state code. Previously, the master thoroughfare plan fulfilled this requirement and generally established policy guidance for public ways. Oh, I'm sorry, this is also from state guidance. This is how the master thoroughfare plan fulfills that requirement. And it establishes a means to plan for various investments needed to address a wide range of community transportation needs. So it's a way to plan ahead for some of our transportation needs. Previously in Bloomington, our last version of this was called the master thoroughfare plan. It was part of the growth policies plan. This is all fun since we change terms all the time. The growth policies plan was the comprehensive plan from 2002. And the master thoroughfare plan was one chapter of that plan. It was chapter five. It was 14 pages. Sounds great. It helped us determine right-of-way widths and that was adopted in 2002. Because we have not replaced it, it is what we are using still when we have to make decisions and questions about the right-of-way. We also have a bicycle and pedestrian transportation and greenways system plan. It's a lot of fun to say. This is a separate plan from our master thoroughfare plan. It was originally created in 2001. It was updated in 2008. It created a vision and a proposed network for bicycle facilities. And much to one of our comments, it did not focus on pedestrians. So even though pedestrians were in the name of the plan, it really talked about benefits and the need to work on that, but proposed more projects that, about improving bicycling throughout the community. So the comprehen, I'm sorry, the transportation plan is combining these two plans. We used to have the master thoroughfare plan of 14 pages, the bicycle and pedestrian plan of 80 to 90 pages. And now we are basing the plan off of the goals, of course, from the adopted comprehensive plan. So this transportation plan is a combination of all of these documents. That's one reason it's longer than the past thoroughfare plan because it's a combined plan. And that's one reason it's more complicated too. But basically, when we are talking about walking, bicycling, driving and transit, we are generally talking about sharing the same right-of-way and how we use that right-of-way. So we wanted to address that in the same document instead of having to reference it in different places. So the planning process for the transportation plan started with the comprehensive plan. You guys remember all of that. It was great. And then our department has led this process. Just to go through all the steps. We did an RF, a request for proposals in 2017. We reviewed those proposals, selected a firm. The firm was Tool Design Group. They're a national transportation planning and engineering firm with experts and a lot of experience in communities across the nation, including South Bend, Indiana, is one place in Indiana where they've done work. They led the public engagement, the plan development, the draft plan and a second round of public engagement. After that second round, they edited the plan and it's been, and I would say, staff, staff's primary responsibility since that point. We'll take us back one year to January 2018. Here's a picture from this room. We started, Tool Design hosted a four-day public engagement process. There was a kickoff public meeting with about 90 people in attendance in here. There were stakeholder meetings throughout the days. Some council members participated in stakeholder meetings and the public meeting. There were open drop-in hours that some people attended. And then there was a follow-up meeting. I believe the kickoff, I don't remember if it was a Monday or Tuesday, and then a follow-up meeting on a Thursday of that week. There were key recommendations presented in the public meeting and between 40 and 50 people attended that. It was in the paper. So some people got to learn about the transportation plan because it was reported on, which is helpful. There is also an online Wiki map and survey that they kicked off the consultants during that week. It was online for one to two months. We advertised that a lot. It did have 250, a bit more responses during that time. Then with all that input, Tool made the first draft. And once we had the first draft, they came back in July 2018 and hosted a shorter three-day event. This included, again, stakeholder meetings, open studio hours and a public meeting. I would have to check the numbers. I'm sorry. Then that was also in the paper. So you had another chance to maybe hear about the plan. The draft plan has been online. It's been updated on our website every time it's updated. From the July public meeting, it generated comments and feedback. The plan was edited based on that feedback from the July meeting. We will be talking about a survey later in this as well. That was one way we collected responses. And then the plan went on to plan commission. It was reviewed at one meeting in October and then they accepted amendments. And it was reviewed again in November with amendments. And with those adopted amendments, it was adopted and forwarded to council in November 2018. We updated the plan based on those amendments and changes and posted that again in December 2018. So one of the biggest questions we have received and comments about the plan is actually in regards to transit. It's been very positive to a large part how many people have reached out and want to see better transit in our community and to see it serve more people. Transit in this plan, we do not specifically address how to change routes, how to change the frequency of the bus. And that's because the city does not have direct control over that and because transit funding, even if we did, is actually limited. So Bloomington Transit is working currently on a route optimization study. They will be able to share the results soon. But because we don't have control over that, we want to focus on the elements of transit that we can impact as a city with our right-of-way. This generally includes access to transit. Most people who access transit, access it as a pedestrian. So we want to come up with ways to prioritize sidewalks to bus stops when they're missing, improving sidewalk conditions at bus stops and improving, we had one amendment to specifically address improving seating at bus stops as well. So those are things we can work on. Other elements of transit that we can work on include dedicated right-of-way for transit and other options potentially that we could do through policy. We can aid in signal preemption for transit and other items that we discuss in the plan. But that's why there's not as much information about transit in the plan as you might expect based on our community. And that's my presentation on chapter one.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenbarger. Okay, questions from council on chapter one? Any questions? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rosenbarger. With transit, and there has been a trend, I think since 2015 or so, where ridership on transit has started to drop. To what that, do you attribute that to? And I've read certain examples, but yeah, I'd like to talk about that a little bit more. And if we did some of these improvements and some of the things that we're talking about, do you think that that will serve to increase ridership on transit? Understanding that we've had this downward trend a little bit, do we expect that to go up or will we maintain it and be? Understanding that we've had this downward trend a little bit, do we expect that to go up, or will we maintain it and be more stable?
So I'm, I am not a transit expert. I'll start with that. One of the, two immediate impacts to transit and transit ridership. First one is gas prices. 2008 had the highest transit ridership in the United States for a long time, and I could be off by a year or something, but it was, transit ridership peaked as the price of gasoline went to $4 a gallon. So people switched modes of transportation based on the cost of gasoline, and we saw it across a lot of US cities. So that is one factor. Gasoline is pretty low right now, the cost of it. Another is other competition. So we now have in Bloomington some scooters. We have a Bike Share. We have Uber and Lyft, also called transportation network companies, and those are all competing. We also have different apartment buses that deliver people from specific apartment complexes to places on campus. So I think part of it is the price of gasoline, part of it is the competition, and potentially people picking what is most convenient. When you can't take an Uber or transit, transportation network company directly to where you're going, people make different choices. But right now, there are a lot of options to people who have the ability to pay for those, and I think you're seeing people pick what's most convenient to them at that time. There was more to your question.
Oh, I think you about got it.
Okay.
So the majority of folks that will use transit would be more of our lower-income residents? Is that what we found?
Yes, and in Bloomington, it's lower-income residents and also students. So students, of course, contribute a lot to the IU bus system and our riders on Bloomington Transit as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the time horizon for this plan. It does say in chapter one that it establishes priorities for the next 20 years, but I assume that it'll be updated before that. What are the plans going forward after this is adopted?
Since it says 20 years, I'm still just going to pick 2040 as an end year because it's nicer. And yes, the plan would be to update it. One reason it's still useful to set a longer horizon is about right-of-way preservation for projects that come through on development review and any new street connections that might be connected with a development review project as well. But we, in this case, haven't updated since 2002. I think five years is a good standard for revisiting, not an overhaul, but a revisiting of a plan. But in the rate of transportation change we're seeing right now, maybe it would be sooner.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. A couple of things that I've heard tonight that I'm mulling over with respect to public transit. And one came from Mark Cornet. I thought it was an interesting statement that Bloomington's actually not dense enough to have a really efficient public transit system. And I mean, as somebody who's lived in Chicago, when you take the bus and it comes every 10 minutes, if you miss one, you're not going to be late to your work or your appointment. So I'd like for you to talk a little bit about that. And then also, in comparison to the statement that you made, that transit funding is kind of out of our control, it's limited, and then the city does not have control over transit issues always. Could you speak a little bit about who does have control? And I suspect it might have a lot to do with the Indiana General Assembly and the funding mechanisms that are generated through state. But I'd just like to get your perspective on both of those things, about how Bloomington is really not set up, geographically or from a density standpoint, to have the kind of efficient public transit systems that would be effective in reducing car travel. And then the next issue, who does control how our bus systems work?
Okay, so.
Couple of things.
Yes, thank you. So the first question is, can we have successful transit in our community? I think the first question with that is how do we define successful transit, of course, and what level of ridership goal are we looking to achieve? My answer is, I don't agree that, I think we can have successful transit, depending on how we define that in terms of ridership for our community. In the next chapter, I did find interesting, and I learned from our plan and the consultants, that Bloomington is denser than Indianapolis and denser than Fort Wayne. So by nature of being a college town, we do benefit from a lot of compact urban form, and it's been something the community has been building toward, you know, for a really long, you know, at least over a decade, the past few decades. So I think it's actually a matter of how we want to prioritize our street space and what we make the most convenient. We have several streets in our community that are multi-lane, worried I'll scare people, but you, some communities do dedicated bus lanes. When you have a dedicated bus lane, the bus doesn't wait behind other vehicles and is on time because it's so much more predictable. Those are tools. If we pursue them in that, in our community, is to be seen. But that is actually something the city can choose to do and work with transit on, would be using right-of-way in different ways for transit, along key corridors or not. So I would say, you know, respectfully, we are pretty dense compared to Indianapolis that has probably lower transit ridership. It's confusing because Indy is a unigov, so it's a challenge to compare like with like, but we are denser than the state capital and denser than Fort Wayne. So I think there's hope. Who has control over transit and transit funding? So to a certain extent, of course, Bloomington Transit is in charge of its budget. I believe council approves the transit budget. The way they get funding, I don't know all of the options, but I do know we can have a local option sales tax that would go to transit. In order to have a local option sales tax, it first has to be voted on and approved by the state for our community to then put on a ballot to vote and decide if we would support a local option sales tax. So there are some challenges with that. Bloomington Transit can also apply for and does, to get funding from the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, which distributes federal funds. And I'm guessing there are some more options, but I'm not, those are the best ones I know of, but I'm not a transit funding specialist for sure. But I'd be happy to check with Lou May if there are lingering questions, too.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. I, oh, maybe this is more of a comment than a question, that we do communicate with Bloomington Transit so that we're all on the same page and we understand what the rate optimization plan is and what that impact is on our own transportation plan. I mean, you, please tell me you talk to each other.
Yes.
Often.
Yes, I just made an appointment today and have a meeting scheduled, so we meet, yes.
Okay, I just think that's so important. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on that because I was thinking similarly to Councilmember Granger. Do you think that there's a deficiency insofar as, for an example, without considering the routes, per se, the specific routes of Bloomington Transit, might be difficult to plan for pedestrian accessibility? There might be areas lacking sidewalks, for instance, in the city, or trails and that sort of thing, you know, that we need to focus on in terms of investment to make sure that people, say particularly of low income, can get to bus service. And without that included in this plan, are we missing something? Is it, is it, let me put it this way, is there an opportunity perhaps, after Bloomington Transit has their plan completed, to fold it into this plan, amend this plan, that, so it considers, it considers bus service?
Okay, so the question being, how could we use the Bloomington Transit routes?
Are there deficiencies, first of all, and how do we remedy them?
Okay.
Regarding transit.
Sure, so I think, and we'll get to it, and then you all might be upset later. I mean, a bigger element is, the plan does not call out specific places we should be building sidewalks, but instead lays a framework for that. I think it would be okay then at a later date to use transit routes as one or the biggest factor in prioritizing where sidewalks go. But I think if it's about sidewalks and pedestrian connections, it can also happen with other facilities, doesn't only have to be a sidewalk, that it's okay that we don't have that updated map because that is actually more detailed analysis that would happen later. In terms of major corridor recommendations, since the plan actually recommends corridor studies, if the transit routes are changing, we know that's going to be coming within the next year, and that would be something that could be incorporated, of course, and worked together to develop as well. So because transit, because the routes can change, it's a bus, it's not a train, to a certain extent, we work together and try to just keep each other updated. I don't, I don't think it needs to be adopted into the plan, but I think potentially criteria and a strong support for considering transit and what that looks like with transportation priorities and funding could be, either is in there or could be enhanced. That's what I would suggest.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin has a question.
Yeah, just to follow up on that answer, maybe if I can make it more succinct. Do you feel that in BT's current conduct of its route optimization study, that they're really sort of paying attention to all the other details that the transportation planners are? In other words, is, is the bus truly a partner with the rest of the city in mobility? Or are they just kind of worried about bus riders?
Oh.
See what I mean?
Mm-hmm. The bus is an excellent partner with the city and mobility. For now, I think that it's a data-focused study that will have next steps with it and different choices and preferences to select because they are coming up with options that are budget-neutral. So it will be recommendations of improving over here, but cutting over here, potentially. And it is based on boardings, you know, total rides and things along those lines with the different routes.
That answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something that was said earlier. The, most of the funding for Bloomington Transit comes from the state and the federal government, the state's Public Mass Transportation Fund, and then federal grants that they apply for. They do not get any money from sales tax. They, there is a proposal, and it has been proposed for several years in a row by our state senator, Mark Stoops, to allow counties to enact an additional income tax increment to pay for transit, which then the county council would have to actually approve doing so. But that has not gotten approved by the state legislature so far, so I just wanted to clarify that.
So it's a local option income tax? Is that what it is? Not sales tax?
That's what's proposed.
Oh, okay.
No sales tax.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. I think if we're done with questions, then we'll go to the public on chapter one. If you have any comments on chapter one, please step up and have your say. You'll need to sign in again, I think.
Hi, Mark Cornet again. There is a lot of debate about transit, and my experience living in Boston was really simple. Don't own a car, and transit becomes the approved method of getting around if you're going very far. I'm not really picking on transit when I say Bloomington isn't really dense enough for transit. If it weren't for the students riding the buses, we probably would have a very different approach to how we deal with transit. It's really the suburban lack of density that's a problem for the transit system in Bloomington. I mean, if you, if you wanted to put transit where the density supports it, the buses would have a pretty small route, and it would be looping around the core neighborhoods in the downtown. It's, there's some well-recognized numbers that have been used in lots of studies that recognize that transit is effective at 10-plus dwelling units per acre. And in a lot of cases, that number is going up. Minneapolis has done some things where to be transit-oriented development, you have to be quite a bit higher than that. Charlotte, North Carolina, there's lots of information out there. Portland, Oregon, of course, is a longstanding leader in that concept. And I do ride the bus, but our bus system is, is really for, for not a way of getting around as much as it's a way of, if you can't afford a car, it becomes an alternative. And that's very different than me standing next to the bank president in a nine-piece suit, riding the bus in Boston. That's not how transit's viewed in Bloomington. I check it out. And finally, my comment about transit is, we built a Monument Transfer Station, I think sometimes for people that actually don't ride the bus, that want to feel good about transit in Bloomington. Check out the real ridership. Go out on West Third and wait for the bus standing by a sign. That's the real view of transit in Bloomington. So I think one of the things we could do, if you wanted to talk about transit, is certainly the facilities themselves for how you wait with some dignity for the bus is a big one because we're telling people there's a way for the poor to get around, and that's really unfortunate. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Other comment from the public? Okay, seeing none. We're back to council for comment on chapter one. Do we, oh, please step forward. You'll have to come to the microphone because.
I'm not sure this is the right time. My name is Janet Denigan. We own property at the corner of Seventh and Lincoln downtown.
And I guess one of the things I wanted to talk about, and I hope this is the right time. You're talking about transit, and one of the main projects you talk about is a bus hub that will go from the Beeline on Seventh Street to Woodline. Is that correct?
Yes, that is part that we will address in the executive summary, too.
In the executive summary?
Yes.
So it's yet to come?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to sit back down?
Well, would you?
I'll come back.
I think we'll be getting to that soon.
Okay, I'll come back then.
If you, we can wait. Thank you. So if there is no other public comment, we're back to council for comment on chapter one. Councilmember Volin, you can begin.
Yeah, first I wanted to point out that I think that the fact that we have a unified transportation plan with that title is good. Back in 2008, I moved that the bicycle and pedestrian greenways plan, it's a mouthful. It used to be called the Alternative Transportation and Greenways Plan, and I did not think that it was appropriate to treat bicycles and pedestrians as second-class travelers. We also hear this whenever anybody uses the word traffic and all they mean is car traffic. Foot traffic and bike traffic count as traffic. But if people are using that word only to talk about how many cars there are in the road, again, it's a failure, as Mr. Cornet has been illustrating, that primarily this is a town that prioritizes the car over other kinds of transit. I would say that in addition to the public transit local income tax, I think they've dropped the word option, Ms. Rosenberg. It's just the lit now, the PT lit, that Senator Stoops is proposing at the State House. I can't say enough good things about that. It would bring in easily as much as, as half of the current total Bloomington Transit budget if it passed. It'd be worth at least $5 million a year, and the BT budget is $10 million, two-thirds of which are, as Councilmember Piedmont Smith said, state and federal dollars. But there's another part of the equation that is both part of the transit equation and part of the funding equation for transit and the. and part of the funding equation for transit, and that is parking, particularly parking meters. And if we can get to the point where we are making people who use garages pay for the total cost of the space we're building for them, parking garages could be used to fund transit. It's going to be a challenge. We have to get a lot of people used to thinking twice about the assumptions they make about parking, which all too often means free parking, free convenient parking. Convenient parking should cost, and when we charge the appropriate market rate for parking, it creates revenues that we can use and should be using to fund transit. There is one measure of success where transit is successful in this community already, and that is if you add the total ridership of IU Campus Bus and Bloomington Transit. Even though Bloomington Transit has dropped a bit, we're still looking at almost 7 million rides a year, divided by the population of Bloomington, the average Bloomingtonian rides a bus 85 times a year, give or take a couple. In comparison, the second most frequently used transit service is City Bus in West Lafayette, and it's roughly half the ridership it is here. So while it's not exactly Boston, and I certainly understand Mr. Cornet's dismay that we don't have very dense communities in Indiana, we are at least dense enough to support that kind of ridership. 100% of Campus Bus and 70% of Bloomington Transit is students, so six out of 7 million riders a year are students riding the bus. If we did not have the bus, we would have extraordinary traffic problems and an extraordinary demand for parking that we would not be able to meet. We do appoint members to the Transit Board, so even though they act as an independent corporation, this council certainly has a say in the way transit is done. IU has not raised the transportation fee in some time. Students need to know that that fee is crucial to making bus service happen, and in fact, it was 20 years ago that an IUSA presidency proposed that students be charged a fee so that they could ride either bus, and that has been one of the most successful things ever to come out of IU student government. I still have great praise for it. The last thing I would point out is, if we are concerned about transit, we have to also be concerned about what Mr. Cornet said, density. I would urge everyone to go down the hall, here in City Hall, and look at the photograph on the wall. It's an aerial photograph of Bloomington from 1954. If you look at that photograph and you admire it, consider that when Bloomi, when that photograph was taken, or since that photograph was taken, Bloomington is now, is now three times more populous, but it is five times larger in area. And all that extra area takes geometrically more money to serve with bus service. So the next time anyone complains about how the buses that go to the edge of the city don't come often enough, that's why it costs more per mile than it does to cover closer to the center of the city. We have to rethink the way we, we, where we put buildings and how dense they are in order to really have hope of fixing that problem. Thank you.
Thanks. Other council comment or questions, if you so choose? Okay, seeing none, then I think we can proceed to Chapter Two.
Okay, Chapter Two of the Transportation Plan is called "The State of Transportation in Bloomington." This is really what you see in a lot of plans, I would say, existing conditions. So this chart is based on census data. It's actually, I'm sorry, from the American Community Survey, which is a five-year estimate. So to a certain extent, the 2010 values are from the census, 2016 was an estimate from the American Community Survey, typically not as good as the census because it's an estimate, I'll say that. So in Bloomington, we can look at our different modes and see where we are right now as a starting point. We have our drive-alone category, walk, carpool, public transit, and bike. Each of these categories, let's see, we can just see the changes from 2010 to 2016. It will be very useful when we can compare this with the 2020 census as well. So with the estimates, our percentage of drive-alone commuters reduced, and when we say commute, this is about home-to-work trips specifically. Walking increased with that estimate to 13%, 13.6%. Carpooling decreased an amount from 9% to 8.7%. Public transit, in this estimate, shows that it increased, and that's what the challenge is with an estimate. In actual numbers, we know that it did, transit use has decreased. So that's one challenge. And then bike mode share, you also see this number drawn from different sources sometimes. It says the 2010 census said 2.3%, and the estimate was 3.9%. We sometimes see different numbers for this, honestly, based on the census as well. So this is our, it does talk about commute mode share in the city and multimodal planning. This section talks about population density, which we have kind of covered now, and comparing Bloomington's density to other communities in Indiana and Monroe County. It talks a bit about public health and draws on a public health measure called physical inactivity and leisure time, which also is interesting and shows you which areas of the city engage in more recreational physical activity. The most interesting correlation with that map and the analysis it provides is that it has really similar numbers or kind of consistent disparities as the bicycle network analysis map. So there are some areas that are less well-connected, and in those areas, we see lower rates of physical activity, or I guess what they say, higher rates of physical inactivity, just kind of a backwards way to put it. It's from a set survey. It talks about access to active transportation and the impacts that has when people have easier access to trails and to transit, and it talks about access to transit as well. And I will note, again, we do typically consider transit an active transportation mode because to access transit, you are getting to transit. In Bloomington, we do not have many park-and-rides, so. And it also talks about challenges with transportation network companies, like we said, Uber and Lyft, for transit and for other modes, and some of the impacts we're seeing with those because we don't have many wide streets in Bloomington with space, let's say, extra space. So at times when a TNC, a transportation network company, is using a bus stop as a pickup location that prevents the bus and all the people riding the bus from accessing that and from maintaining the schedule for the bus. So there are challenges with TNCs. There are also some benefits communities are seeing when they can serve areas that, where transit is more challenging to serve, particularly lower-density areas of communities. It talks about, or we discuss in the plan, other related plans. Not going to go into depth on all of these, but just know that there's a summary, and then there's more information about connections with those plans in the appendix as well. So of course, don't know if you've heard about, about it, the Comprehensive Plan is a connected plan, the MPO Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the Monroe County Comprehensive Plan, the Growth Policies Plan of 2002, our Bicycle and Pedestrian Transportation and Greenway Systems Plan. And another related plan is the 2010 Indiana University Master Plan. I wanted to highlight one piece from that plan that, that the Transportation Plan discusses, which is the percentage of the various campus populations that live within three miles of campus. So that is, well, an hour walk, a shorter bike ride, and a short bus trip to campus. And so it's interesting to break that out and see how many people live within three miles of campus, as that is to, for intents and purposes, their work. When you're a student, we can consider it your work, and if you're staff or faculty, it is your work. So if we focus on that space to make some gains, there's actually a lot of gains that can be made. Out of undergraduate students, 90% live within three miles. For graduate students, it's 75%. For faculty, it's 57%, and staff is 35%. There are some asterisks by faculty and staff because I could only find a combined number quickly online about how many faculty and staff work at IU, so I can't actually distribute that as accurately as I'd like. I took a guess, that's why, just in full disclosure. So if you work that out, it's an estimated 37,000 people who are going to the IU campus that live within three miles of their destination, let's say. I also understand campus is not tiny, so it might vary slightly. In our town of 85,000 people, that's 43.5% of our community living within three miles of that location. That's pretty, it's just pretty substantial and a potential location to make gains. Continuing on, Chapter Two also discusses autonomous vehicles and different levels of autonomy with the vehicles. There is, discusses and provides us a chart for some of our streets that have higher motor vehicle volumes on them in order to compare and see where those are in the community. There's an existing functional classification map. We propose new typologies in the plan later, which we'll talk about in a bit, but those are existing functional classifications, and we will also have to keep a functional classification system to continue and use that with MPO funding. There are maps for fatal and incapacitating injury crashes, and those are by mode. So over the time period examined, there were eight fatal crashes and 252 incapacitating injury crashes. There are more crashes than that, but those are, of course, fatal being the most severe and traumatic, and to, and incapacitating injury are severe injury crashes. When we also look at those numbers, we know that pedestrian and bicyclists, based on their mode share in the community, are disproportionately involved in crashes. This is seen in a lot of communities as well. While we looked at it and the estimates were 13% mode share and 3.9% mode share, out of the incapacitating injury crashes, they represented 18.2% and 7.5%. And that is also further examined, actually, in the MPO crash report. And I'm sorry for this typo, and a huge one is, three of the eight fatal crashes involved a motorcyclist or moped user, and that is also hugely disproportionately represented. And the plan has a statement about improving safety, and our Comprehensive Plan says this, and it's stated in this plan, I believe, as well, about the idea of adopting a vision-zero policy, which means as a community, we want to work towards zero traffic fatalities. So I'll just read this. "Street design should be the primary strategy to reduce or eliminate fatal and incapacitating injury crashes, paired with enforcement and educational efforts. Improving sightlines, managing motor vehicle speeds, enhancing pedestrian crossings, and provided separated, providing separated infrastructure are valuable strategies for improving transportation safety." So it's just taking the stance that we know we can and should do more through design to reduce and eliminate fatal and incapacitating injury crashes throughout our community. That is all I have for Chapter Two.
Okay, we'll go to council now for questions on Chapter Two. Councilmember Volin, you can begin.
Yeah, safety had to bring up the thought of scooters, and I'm surprised that the consultants didn't discuss scooters when they're happening all over the country. They hadn't come here yet, but I don't think there's any reference to that, and I think there are some serious safety issues with those, and I'm wondering if there's any recommendation in the transportation plan for them.
I'm not sure what we specifically say. I know there are concerns for safety, and we don't have local data about scooters and safety at this time. I do, I think overarching safety is very important and keeping in mind the safety of all users of the transportation system. What we, what we tend to see is when we, we can actually, every time we talk about bicycle infrastructure, include scooters with that because a separated or a protected bicycle lane also serves someone riding or using a scooter, and the safer and more comfortable infrastructure that we provide, the more likely people will use it as opposed to sidewalk. So it might be something we want to investigate amending, too, but it was, yeah, that's it for that one.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Other questions? Chapter Two. I had one. It was on, it's Section 2.5, which is the existing street network and traffic volumes. A couple of questions come to mind. One is that the average daily traffic volume, vehicles per day, some of the years that we've measured are over 10 years old, and does that really give us an adequate idea of the traffic volume, since a lot changes in 10 years, in terms of development, in terms of population growth and that sort of thing? Is that something that we need to attend to? That's my first question. The other question regarding this table is, did we consider using, putting in level of service for these roads? In other words, so we have an idea of their, whether they've reached capacity yet?
Okay, so for the first question...
First question is, it seems that some of the data is dated.
Yes, so it is. Originally, we did not include the older accounts, and, but then because we had them, other staff wanted us to. So in some cases, I think it's providing more information about the corridor, but I do think it's a fair question that I can't answer, honestly, of how much it has changed. So the question would be, maybe, is it worth keeping in as is, or is it feasible to update potentially?
Yeah, I think it, well, it should be updated, I think. The other, the other question is level, level of service. I mean, it's one thing, I can maybe envision what, 3,000 vehicles per day, but I don't know in terms of whether the capacity is, has been reached or whether it's, you know, we have a rating, right, A through F, I think it is? Is that something that we could include in the plan?
Yes and no. So what I considered adding was actually the number of lanes on each of the streets because in some cases, we are comparing dramatically different streets, and when you start to break it down by how many people and cars are moving through a street per lane, it, it looks different because, for example, West Third Street at South Gates Drive is almost six lanes across compared with actually Bloomfield Road, and that section of it is two lanes. So it's carrying a lot of vehicles. So the question about level of service is, I guess, as a multimodal transportation planner, I think it is a very flawed metric, and it's a challenge to use it because it focuses on the motor vehicle capacity of the street and the idea that to resolve the issue, you add more motor vehicle capacity. And I think almost because it's so connected to like letter grades, we have a, like, just a general psychological reaction where for urban areas, I believe D is considered pretty standard. But people might hear that and pan, like, oh, I'm getting a D on this. So if it was something, I could investigate and ask the city engineer, or interim city engineer, for thoughts as well, but maybe I also would be curious of providing something different, too.
We have that data. It seems to me that it would normalize the data, that I could, I could grasp the congestion of that street if, if we had level of service displayed in the report, but that data exists and it, we have that data, don't we? So it wouldn't be a chore to include it if we wanted to.
I honestly have never done a level of service calculation, but I can find out.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Other questions? Chapter Two. Okay, we'll go to public on Chapter Two. Yeah, I'm sorry. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Just a very short question. In a couple places, it still says State Road 37. Is that just an error, or is that...
I'll have to word search.
Intentional.
Because some places, it depends maybe where the crossing is, but you know them well enough that if it's referencing the wrong thing, then we can update it. As a, we can do a typo amendment, too.
Oh, I'm, I'm working on one.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's another typo that you've, several, bound to be a few. Okay, seeing no more questions, we'll go to public for comments on Chapter Two. If anyone cares to make a comment. Thank you. You'll have to state your name, but you won't have to sign in, I understand.
Hi, Mark Corbett. Please don't do level of service. It's an outmoded metric for understanding, I think, what Ms. Rosenbarger's trying to, to talk about with multimodal. For example, that language was used to widen the bypass, and councilperson Volan pointed out clearly that since the decision had been made in eighteen forty-five, that the traffic had gone down every year, and it made no difference, once the discussion was out of the barn. Please, please be careful with that. And I, I take issue with this, this statement. Sightlines does nothing for reducing fatalities and incapacitating injuries. It means you can drive faster. And traffic engineers, which is what we've called them forever, it's recently changed to transportation engineers, have, for time immemorial, used that kind of language to promote automobile mobility movement. And as we move forward, whether it's talking about proper pricing for garages to pay for themselves, or any other number of things, actually, congestion is when you start to consider not driving a car, and when you consider finding another way to get around. And unfortunately, we, we've argued for a long, long time, ever since the first growth policies plan was, was brought up, about how do we get from Kmart on the east side to Kmart on the west side? That was one of the pressing questions of twenty-five years ago. And put the Third Street corridor under a lot of argument for a long, long period of time about how we do that. And back to traffic engineering, I've had a lot of encounters with NDOT and, and local folks as well. It's the only engineering profession that I'm aware of that forsakes all others for moving cars. When they talk about level of safety with cars, I had NDOT officials tell me one time that they couldn't put street trees along the forty-six connector to Ellisville when they were improving it, and improving it. And asked them why, and they said they were immovable objects, and they could damage a car. And I said, well, you're putting sidewalks along that route. What about pedestrians? Well, they're not immovable, they can jump out of the way. The guy was dead serious. That's how we've often thought about automobiles and traffic management, is get out of our way. And I'm hoping that we can, we can move on from that, and talk about actually giving other modes of transportation. If I were making a list, it would start at pedestrian, maybe go transit, bicycle. Cars would be at the bottom rung of the list, not at the top rung. So, please be careful what you wish for, and as we move forward, I'm hoping that we can recognize that you cannot build your way out of, of transportation problems with automobiles. Thank you.
Thank you. Other count, other comment from the public? Okay, we're back to council for comment or question on Chapter Two. Councilmember Chopra?
I just want to say how much I appreciate the expertise and the forethought that went into this plan, because I do know that Ms. Rosenbarger and our plan, planning staff are specifically trained in the area of this transportation plan, and I think that we need to remember that throughout the process. I think sometimes, you know, we're, a lot of us are experts in fields, and I know it's frustrating for us when, when people try to tell us how to do, do our jobs or our professions, and that, that's why, in large part, I defer to staff on, on these issues. Not to mention, I also know that our staff is very progressive and up-to-date with industry trends, and, and also the progressive values of our community. So, I guess I've been hearing some comments today that make me wonder how we're going to move forward with this process, and I hope it is one that first recognizes that there are experts in the field that put this together. And we can have opinions, and we can have thoughts, but that doesn't mean that it's backed up by training and facts. And I just, I hope that, as a council, we can recognize someone sitting at this desk who could probably be one of those consultants, if she so chose. So, I appreciate you all hearing me out on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment? I'll, I'll just make a quick comment to say that I'm certainly a great supporter of bike and pedestrian and, and public transit, and advocated for it. But I, I simply have to consider level of service, because congestion does matter, if for no other reason than for emergency vehicles. If emergency vehicles can't access certain parts of the city because of congestion, then we have a problem, and we have to address it. So, with that, I think, then we'll go now to, oh, Councilmember Sims, yes?
Thank you. Ms. Rosenbarger, did I hear earlier, and I know, I think you said it was a guesstimate, but with regard to population within the three-mile radius of the campus, I think you said forty-five hundred faculty and thirty-five hundred staff?
That was the part I was estimating, and I don't know. I just know that it was a combined eight thousand faculty and staff for the IU campus. The percentage, the percentages that live within three miles was from IU's plan. The distribution of those numbers, yes, was a guess on my part.
Okay, I would just suggest that maybe you research more. I'm not so sure I dispute the numbers, but three-mile radius, I'm one of those staff, and I live six miles away. And many of the folks that I work with live out of county. So, if we're just going to use those numbers, I just want them to be accurate as, as much as possible. And my other comment, with regard to the physical activity and leisure time activity, those are laudable goals, and I think that's one of the good byproducts of being physically active. But to me, that would be more of a choice, and, and part of what we're doing or talking about would mandate that more than being a choice. Is that, am I off? I'll, I'll walk if I have to walk to, to do some things, and a byproduct of that is that I will be more physically active, biking and that sort of thing. But for, for us to say that our goal is to lessen obesity, obesity, and give you better outcomes on heart disease, those are good byproducts. But is that one of the goals of, of the plan that we're doing? Is that we, and I know good health is, is good, I'm not saying that, but is that something we would want to emphasize as part of our plan?
Let me try to answer that. I think the, the map and the physical inactivity is slightly, the consultants did include that, and it's almost a correlation, and not specific about transportation. Because in reality, if you were walking to work, that is not leisure time, physical activity. So, but what it does show us is, we, there's research that shows when people live close to a trail, or have easy access to that, they're more likely to use it, and that is still a choice about if they want to walk recreationally, or do an activity on that, either than non-recreational as a form of transportation, or leisure time recreation activity. And that proximity and connectivity to those resources in our community does just provide more options for people. And I think what is interesting about that map is its connection with the bicycle network analysis map, and that the areas that have lower rates of physical activity, leisure time physical activity, are also less connected, and that there's also some overlap with lower income areas of our community as well. So, to me, it would just be more, are these areas well-connected, and are we providing people access across our community to resources to make those choices? Not, somebody has to do this. And it's also, you might, one more point I would make about it, is it's a privilege to have leisure time to pursue those activities. So, that is a correlation as well. And it does state that in the plan, because we wanted to make clear. We understand not everybody is interested in pursuing that, or has the luxury of the time to do that, too. Does that help at all?
Oh, yeah, that's good. Thank you for the clarification. And if I may...
Yes, please.
I have just one more comment.
Of course.
I agree with Councilmember Chopra. We've got experts, we've got great staff that have worked hard and come up with certain things. But I just want to make it clear that by us seeking clarification or asking questions should not be construed as lack of confidence in you guys' abilities. In my particular case, it's so I can better understand, because I didn't go to school for it, so I depend on that. So, I just don't want people thinking if we're questioning that, that we somehow are, are thinking that there's less competency. And trust me, that is not the case. So, I just want that to be clear, at least from my position. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comment from council? Okay, I think then we'll proceed back to the executive summary.
Okay.
Is that right?
So, the executive summary is actually, like I said, I think a jumping off point for the rest of the plan. Obviously, it's a summary of the highlights of the plan. The part I'm going to go through of it are each of the key recommendations in it, and then a formula for going through those. So, the key recommendations that we see in the executive summary are to plan for future street connections, to integrate transportation and land use, redesign Kirkwood Avenue as a shared street with a focus on pedestrians, to improve multimodal travel along major east-west and north-south corridors, to extend the B-line and invest in high-priority multimodal routes, to expand the neighborhood greenway network, and adopt a complete streets policy. So, with each of these, if you will bear with me, we're going to go through why the recommendation is important, how it is included in the plan, because this is the executive summary, but I'll briefly touch on how you see it and where you see it elsewhere in the plan later. The results from a community survey, so, oh, I forget the exact timeline, I'll find out. We did a survey this summer of the key recommendations. Over seven hundred people took this online survey, and I'm sharing the results with each one, and how it relates to the comp plan goals. So, our first one, future street connections, they're very important, because they increase connectivity throughout our community. They plan for connectivity as redevelopment occurs. In the planning department, planning and transportation department, when a developer comes through with a new planned unit development, or with a subdivision, we cannot arbitrarily require that they build a street that's not in an adopted plan. The positive way of saying that is, we need future street connections to be in our adopted plan, in order to require developers build those when they are doing projects of a certain scale. That's generally rezone, or a planned unit development, or a subdivision. Not all proposed connections happen. There are a lot of connections in here that I might not see in my lifetime, or some of them. Most connections require redevelopment. As the city, we have not built a lot of new roads, and it would take political interest and capital funding to pursue that. So, for a while, that's not a thing we've been doing. We wait for redevelopment, redevelopment to happen, and a developer builds it. So, to be constructed by a developer, already said that, it must be in an adopted plan, and redevelopment can happen in surprising places. So, if we look at some lines, some proposed street connections on the map, and think, that's insane, we should remember, in two thousand and two, we didn't know the hospital would move. So, there are connections and different developments across the city that we want to think ahead on, and better to have something in a plan that doesn't come to fruition than for something to happen, and we didn't plan for it. So, in the plan, you see this in Figure Eighteen, the new connections and street typologies, and in Table Six, new roadway connections. And when people were surveyed, the green is positive here, and the gray is neutral. So, majority of people were supportive generally, and then a large chunk were neutral, twenty-nine percent were neutral, about this key recommendation, and their support for it. When we look at the comp plan, we would say this is connected to the statement that we need to make a master thoroughfare plan, as a statement of policy for the development of public ways and public space, places. Somebody sneezes tonight. And with the thoroughfare plan, that we need to preserve and establish rights of way. So, by having future street connections in a plan, we are creating literally a roadmap to plan for these connections, and how development will happen around them. Our, our next key recommendation, integrate transportation and land use. So, street design influences development, and development influences street design. So, we want to take a different look at the way we categorize our streets. Our last plan used what's called the functional classification system, which is very broadly used across the country, and will continue to be used as a base classification for the streets. But a classic example is Walnut at Winslow, Walnut at Hillside, Walnut at Second, Walnut at the Square, Walnut at Seventeenth, and Walnut at Miller Showers are all different contexts, or we want to encourage a different context potentially. So, one way that this plan integrates transportation and land use is by proposing a street typology system, where the street doesn't have the same typology applied to it for the entire length. By keeping the base classification system for our MPO funding, we can do that. This is more, a little bit like zoning for streets, so that we can think of them and the way they pair with the built environment around them. So, we want to connect it to the proposed land use, and we want to aim to be context-sensitive. Generally, about a little less than fifty percent of people agreed with this. Thirty-seven percent were neutral. So, general support, I would say. And we have support in the comprehensive plan for this as well. Streets are public spaces that must interact with and enhance surrounding land uses, both existing and planned, and we want to promote context-sensitive designs for the many different land uses and natural contexts within the community that the transportation system serves and/or transacts. And to establish street design guidelines that follow complete streets policy, and provide continuity for each mode, pedestrians, bicyclists, transit, and motor vehicles. I would say, this is a thing we do touch on with pedestrians. This was slightly true of our last plan, but we do, every street typology has a lot of pedestrian accommodations, and different parameters for the pedestrian zones, which we get to talk about next week. Stay tuned. Redesign Kirkwood Avenue as a shared street with a focus on pedestrians. So, I think, and when it says this, it's talking about Walnut Street to Indiana Avenue specifically. So, Kirkwood is a vibrant street, we know that, and we want to continue its success and build upon it. This is Monument Circle in Indianapolis. It is designed as a shared street. That means, it's a seamless transition from the sidewalk to the street level, where on most of the time, vehicles are operating in the street space, and pedestrians on the sidewalk space, but it creates easier access and easier transitions for public events, and for more opportunities, potentially for outdoor seating with restaurants, and things along those lines. Shared streets are more inclusive, especially during events, and they can reduce the burden of street closures on public safety staff, because we do actually do a lot for street closures that can be designed with any street, but with this project into the redesign of it. This is a different example. Our neighbor, Columbus, Indiana, this is a before and after, and this is also a shared street in Columbus. The shared street in Columbus is on the right, and this was Kirkwood on the left at the bicentennial street fair this past April, twenty-eighteen. In terms of the survey, just over fifty percent agreed, eleven percent were neutral, and thirty-seven percent, you know, ranged from strong disagreement to disagreement. from strong disagreement to disagreement. But still, over 50% were in agreement. In addition, and we can talk about this in another meeting with the consultants, we attended a Kirkwood business meeting and discussed the idea with the Kirkwood businesses. I'll also let them, they want to reach out and talk for themselves. The biggest concern that I heard was construction, not necessarily the outcome of the street. So, how to deal with construction of a street and what that means for businesses along it. There's a lot of support in the comp-plan for this. I might just read the categories, if that's okay, since I've read a lot. So goal 2.3, resilient public spaces. Policy 2.3.2, ensure public spaces are accessible to all ages and abilities and serve to connect all generations. 2.3.3, ensure public spaces and facilities are well-maintained and frequently updated, and that these spaces and facilities are responsive to cultural and technological changes. And a program is that public spaces and events held in public places should be as affordable as is feasible, particularly for full access to people of all walks of life. That's connected in that reducing the burden and the costs of hosting events can contribute as well. So this one will be different, because it was amended at the Plan Commission, and the way this key recommendation is in the plan has been amended. But we'll talk about this as amended. So, improve multimodal travel along major east-west and north-south corridors. In our community, crash rates along College, Walnut, Atwater, and Third Street are higher, and I mean rates, so that takes into account volumes along those streets, are some of the highest in our city. There's a mismatch between motor vehicle speed in the pedestrian-friendly business orientation that we are trying to achieve in those spaces, particularly for that one, College and Walnut, but we could say pedestrian-friendly atmosphere for Third and Atwater. Research shows that, and this one is in particular to two ways, two-way streets is a tool to reduce illegal speeding and improve safety. Bloomington hosts approximately 3 million visitors per year. This number was very surprising to me. It's from Visit Bloomington. And resident turnover of approximately 8,100 IU freshmen happens annually, too. So we have 8,000 new residents to our community each year. So, as this is amended, part of this would be, we want our streets to be intuitive, and we want them to work for a range of users. And so, with improving multimodal along those streets, how can we achieve that? And there are varying options to do that. And this recommendation focuses on doing a study to identify what we would like for those options to pursue. This chart, you cannot see because it's tiny. So, for crash rates along these streets, from the MPO crash report, you can look at the top 50 crash locations throughout the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. When we take that, 26 of those locations are within the City of Bloomington jurisdiction. And by that, I mean, the streets are within the city and the streets are our jurisdiction, whereas there are some streets within the city that are not ours. Of those, of our 26, 16 of the locations involve at least one one-way street, so it's about over 61%. And 18 of those locations included College Avenue, Walnut, Third, or Atwater. So, almost 70% of our top crashes involve one of those key corridors, and that is the basis, as well, of this recommendation to improve safety along them. For, and those crashes were predominantly automobile, but when we pull out just specifically our pedestrian and bicycle crash locations, the top 11, nine of the locations involve a one-way street with the pedestrian bicyclist crashes, and six of those locations involved College Avenue, Walnut Street, Third Street, or Atwater Avenue. So with this recommendation, it's usually, it's generally looking at College, Walnut, Third, and Atwater, and over 50% of our key crashes are there for bicyclists and pedestrians as well. When this was written at previously, don't even want us to focus on it, as a recommendation to two-way those streets, there was a lot of disagreement. The blue is strong, that dark blue is strong disagreement. So that is part of what we went through with Plan Commission. This one is for College and Walnut, and this one, whoops. Oh, I'm sorry, it should have been Third. They were very similar, but it was also a strong disagreement for Third Street as well. Third and Atwater. So, support in the comprehensive plan for improving multimodal travel along major east-west and north-south corridors. We can find that in our programs for motor vehicles to adopt a citywide Vision Zero policy that recognizes traffic crashes as preventable incidents and establishes a goal of eliminating all transportation-related fatalities and serious injuries. We also find support in goal 6.1, to increase sustainability, improve the overall sustainability of our transportation system, and 6.1.7, policy to prioritize safety and accessibility over capacity and transportation planning, design, construction, and maintenance decisions. So all of those can support corridor studies and improving the safety of these streets. Moving on, so extend the B-line and invest in high-priority multimodal areas. This makes a lot of sense and is important, because we want to increase multimodal connectivity in our community. We have a specific goal to increase multimodal mode share, and we want to increase the number of people who feel comfortable walking, bicycling, and accessing transit in our community. We want to incorporate all users into street design, and this had broad support. So, almost 75% of people who took the survey supported extending the B-line and investing in high-priority multimodal routes. And 18% were neutral. Only 9% of people had some level of disagreement. That really actually just goes to show you the success of the B-line as well, which is wonderful. So, from the comp-plan, I'll just say, pretty much every goal in chapter six, except for parking, would play into this and the educational goal, just to save us some. Our last one, well, second to last, is expand the neighborhood greenways network. So research shows that high comfort routes attract the most users. When we say high comfort, that is the balance between actual safety and perceived safety. So we do want to increase actual safety on a street, but we also know that as long as that is high, perceived safety might vary, and we want people to know that it's safe and to feel safe using it. So neighborhood greenways are one tool for doing that. The B-line is another example, of course, of a high comfort route in our community, but Bloomington doesn't have any other abandoned rail lines to convert. So instead of converting other rail lines, we have to look at our network and what we can do with what we have. Neighborhood greenways are low-volume streets that can be improved to accommodate more users. We still have a trial on Allen Street, go check it out. Allen from, actually mainly goes from Washington to Henderson, that is getting updated soon as well. So in the plan, you'll see this via the bicycle facilities map, the high-priority bicycle network, and through our street designs, that we are working to be sure with any street, we are accommodating pedestrians with a safe space, we're prioritizing sidewalks and street trees, and we're providing also high comfort bicycle facilities as well. There was support for this as well, just over 52% of people supported it, 17% neutral. There's a lot of support for this as well, very similar in the transportation plan chapter. Goal 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4 specifically relate to this recommendation. Our last, but not least, is to adopt a complete streets policy. Why would we do that when we are really trying to follow complete streets principles with each of these typologies? We would do it to make a transparent and predictable process. So there are challenges where we can't build all the things we want to build, and perhaps when we need to make different decisions or accommodations, some sort of public process would be a useful tool. And we want to consider and accommodate all users. This was not on this community survey, so we don't have any input, because there was a limit to how many questions I could ask. So the plan addresses this by recommending to adopt a complete streets policy, and the street section typologies accommodate all modes as well. The comprehensive plan supports this by directly saying we should adopt a complete streets policy. And, that's all I have.
Thank you. Questions on the executive summary? Councilmember Volin?
Two quick questions. One, didn't we already adopt the complete streets policy?
No, the City of Bloomington does not have one. The MPO has a complete streets policy. So the MPO policy would apply to any project that is funded through the MPO, but of course we do a lot of locally-funded projects as well.
Okay, the other question is, were people who disagreed with two-way streets surveyed as to whether they felt those streets were safe, not whether they preferred the plan? Do they, or that the one-way streets were safe, I should say? Do they think that the existing streets were safe?
No, it was not a question, what you're, there was no question about safety or perceived safety in the survey.
Is it possible to, when was the survey taken?
June or July this summer.
Is it possible to ask additional questions, or is it, it's too late now?
Well...
A survey, to have another survey, I mean.
Oh, it's not too late to have another survey. It's not too late. I think we had higher participation because it was connected to the recommendation and to the meetings taking place in the summer, so I'm not sure that the same level of participation would happen.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, I have one. Susan Sandberg, did you have one? Okay. Ms. Rosenberg, going back to your, I think, first slide, where you mentioned it was street extension, and that developers, can't remember how you phrased it, that there couldn't be a requirement for a street extension in a PUD process without a plan, without reference to an adopted plan? Am I phrasing that correctly? There it is.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you are.
Needs to be in a plan. But I remember PUDs when we or staff requested street connections, and they were made. Or, under the rubric of public good, demonstrated public good in a planned unit development, we or staff suggested that they connect streets. So it seems to me that it isn't required. I mean, it can happen without a plan being in place. Am I correct?
Sure, so with a planned unit development, I agree that more negotiations happen. That is correct, so I apologize. There are cases where a street is included in a planned unit development that was not included in the thoroughfare plan, but it is risky. So if there are things that we know would be useful connections, we would rather include them, and then if it doesn't make sense in the future, you don't have to make them build that. But you can, you could update it or do something different as part of it, but if it's in the plan, that's the way that a developer comes in, knowing that it's an expectation, and it just helps create, I would say, more transparency in the project as well.
Okay, so it's an aid, in other words. It helps to facilitate a road connection to have it in a plan, clearly.
Yes, I think...
But it doesn't, it doesn't mean that it can't happen during the PUD process. Is that correct?
I guess it has happened in the past. I'll say, I don't know how often that is the case, or the legalities of it having to be there or not, even though I understand it has happened. A subdivision, it, I don't know. So, we would want it in the plan in order to be upfront with a developer and to have a better likelihood of seeing a connection built, as opposed to it being a give-and-take negotiation, potentially. It might be able to just say, council, council has more sway than I do with developers, but we would rather be upfront and transparent about the expectations of developing or redeveloping a property.
I see. Okay, any other questions? We'll go to the public then, on the executive summary. If you have a comment, please step forward. State your name.
Hi, Mark Cornet again. The diagram, the cross-section of the street, shows the sidewalk area at 10 feet. I would certainly hope that we could widen that and consider that the café zone. And, can you, is it possible to go back to that diagram? I know, I know there are more diagrams in the document. Some of you heard me speak about the downtown and the lack of sidewalk width, trying to promote café space on the sidewalk. The sidewalk in front of Malibu is over 10 feet. Now, it does have the tree grates and some other things in there as well. It's about 16 total, so you lose about five for the tree grates. Don't forget that we have a clear path rule for accessibility of 54 inches, and that leaves 5'6" in that diagram for café space. I hope that as we pursue new development, that we can do better. Some of you saw my talk about the hospital site and all the new buildings that have been built in the downtown and the lack of sidewalk sitting opportunities that have come with those developments. It's kind of embarrassing that we haven't done better, and it's clearly an indicator that just because we say we have a policy of ground-floor retail, doesn't mean we've effectively adopted the proper policies to actually make it successful. And I have to side with the developers, when they say the retail market is soft, that's also, from a design perspective, they're effectively saying that we don't really have the right type of public space. And as Beth correctly pointed out, Ms. Rosenberg correctly pointed out, I apologize. She's my next-door neighbor, by the way. So I, we say that once in a while. And, we've missed opportunities. And, and these diagrams matter, and it's just a diagram tonight, but I'll be in a planning session with staff, and they'll turn to the diagram and say the sidewalk's 10 feet wide. So it becomes law, effectively, at some point, too, and we turn back to the plan and say, this is what the plan says. And, I apologize for keep coming up here, and I do have a degree in this stuff, I'm not just talking. And, that is not enough space. And what's happening is, we all wring our hands and go, we don't know why retail's working. We, we're not sure what happened. It'll never work. And then we've heard multiple developers come back and say, I'd like to convert that ground-floor retail to residential. You've heard those cases with, when you've been on Plan Commission, possibly. And, now's the time to talk that through. And I hope that we can do that. I wouldn't say the uptown cafés, outdoor café space is very successful, to sort of put your shoulder into the plate glass and try and stay out of the way. And now that we have scooters, don't get me started, but there's less space on the sidewalk than ever before. And, I'm hoping that we can consider these things when we move forward with this, and that we don't leave that out. Because I'm downtown every day, and I can tell you from experience, and I run into a lot of you folks on the sidewalk downtown, and it's a great place to swap stories and information, and to be able to do that comfortably requires wide sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Please step forward. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jean Kapler, and I'm going to suggest that maybe at some point in the deliberations, attention is paid to not just, you know, width of the sidewalks and things to promote pedestrian use, but also things like benches and the availability of benches along sidewalks, because some folks, you know, may want to be pedestrians, but they're going to need to sit down periodically along the way. And I know we've got some benches downtown, most of them are without backs, which are difficult for some folks to use well. And so, I kind of feel that should be included in a transportation plan for pedestrian use. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comment? Please step forward, it's your last chance on the plan this evening. You'll have future chances, but...
I'll try this again. My name is Janet Denigan.
I'll try this again. My name is Janet Denigan, and-
Could you please pull the mic up a bit?
Sure.
Closer. Thank you.
My name is Janet Denigan. We, we are fortunate enough to be on Seventh Street, where the bus hub is planned, as well as on Hunter Avenue, where the Beeline Trail is planned, so we get a double dose of this through the plan. But, one of the things I've noticed reading the plan is, in some ways, it's a strategic plan, and that's good because they talk about it being 20 to 40 years, and if you're talking about a specific project, they'll say, well, don't worry, this is, this can be changed over time. But we all know, once it's in the plan unapproved, it's in the plan unapproved. So, it'd be nice if, if the groups could meet with people who are stakeholders in this, like people who are on Seventh Street, be included in some of those discussions. People who are on the greenways would be included in some of those discussions, because in our neighborhood, we had, we probably had 50 to 60 people at a neighborhood association meeting. None of them had heard about this until we put flyers in everyone's mailboxes. That was the first time they had heard about it. I know you guys have meetings and you plan, but when we build something personally, we have to notify people within 150 feet of our house. But we don't get that same luxury of, of being notified for some of these big plans. So, anyway, I want to talk about some of the operational things that come out of it, because one of the things is the Seventh Street hub for buses. And it would go from the Beeline to Memorial, or to Woodlawn, or to Memorial Union at the end of the campus. And one of the things they talk about, if you could go back to that 90-foot street plan? They talk about it being 90 feet wide. Well, we currently have 66 feet. If you count the sidewalks and the street, and the sidewalks on both sides, they're 66 feet, and to get to 90 feet, you have to take another 12 feet off of each side of the street, or some combination of that. So, we don't have a lot of space to do that, and, you know, some of the properties have built right up to the sidewalk, so you can't actually go into that space anymore. It's, it's concrete, and it's buildings. So, how do you plan a 90-foot strip, like you see here, on a street that's only 66 feet wide, including the sidewalks right now? So, the other thing about Sixth, Seventh Street and being a bus hub is, we see a lot of traffic go by. We watch a lot of situations happen down that street. As you can imagine, being there every day, working, and living with what was left behind the next day, but we caught the bar route on the way home for students. They're downtown, and they traffic that Seventh Street going back and forth. So there's a lot of student traffic, maybe late at night. It's a dangerous situation for them anyway. So I don't know about the whole idea of a bunch of buses and these students all combined. And then you have parking. We park on both sides of that street, except for where there are bus stops. So where are all those people going to park? If you drive through Seventh Street from Walnut, say, to the Union, you probably will see, you know, 80 cars parked there. Where are all those cars going to park if they can't park on the street? And one of the things they comment on in the plan, I actually have read the plan-
Thirty seconds.
It's very interesting, some of the things they throw in. But one of the things it says is, for some areas such as 10th Street, a corridor study that considers, among other options, restricting private vehicle access at all times, or during certain hours, would greatly improve the efficiency, convenience, and reliability of transit. And they say, they can do that. Keeping access to bus stops clear of other vehicles through policy, infrastructure, and enforcement can help bus operators maintain their schedules and increase efficiency. Then that means that you-
That's your time, ma'am.
Oh, please, I've waited three, two hours.
If you could, please finish up.
Okay. I've lost my train of thought. If you're going to restrict, it, it almost sounds like they're going to eliminate cars from being able to go down Seventh Street, in which case, people who have businesses, we can't get our customers there any longer. We have two entrances to our property, one on Seventh Street, one on Lincoln, but on Lincoln, it's one-way. So no one could get to us from the north, because they'd have to go south on a one-way, wrong way, or Seventh Street, and that may, they may eliminate traffic completely. So we just want you to think about, you know, the parking, the traffic, you know, we have businesses on that street. So, if we could be included in some of those discussions early on, I think that would be important.
I think we'll, we'll have to wrap it up.
Okay.
So, I think-
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
It would be nice if we could have meetings just to focus on individual projects that you have identified, because that is an operation plan, operational plan. It isn't strategic, I mean, it can be strategic, but we already know for Seventh Street, you've already issued bonds for that, or working on it. We received a survey notice in the mail yesterday that they're going to start surveying all the properties. So really, there's no time to discuss it. You're, they're already started, and you haven't even approved it yet.
Okay.
So, it'd just be nice if we could have that kind of interaction. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. Are there any more public comment on the executive summary? Okay, we'll now go back to, come back to council for comment, final comment on the executive summary. Any comment or questions?
Mr. Question again?
Councilmember Mr. Baum.
So if the diagram is, as, is drawing something that actually can't fit, how are we going to, how do we deal with that?
Yes, so, I can try to provide a brief overview now, but we will also dig in pretty hard on that in the next session. So, there are different parameters in here that it says we want to prioritize. The street typologies are generic, so when we say this is general urban, it might, everything might not fit, right? So we did include an appendix that takes into account the actual bicycle facility recommendation, and the actual, for suburban connectors, number of existing lanes for the streets to reduce the width for a lot of the proposed widths. But it's, to a large extent, what we deal with all the time in terms of projects and priorities. And that, with the growth policies plan and the master thoroughfare plan, every time we have a proposed right-of-way width, unless it's a, it doesn't match the on-the-ground width, and basically, you have to make decisions and compromises. The best we can do in the plan then is outline how to prioritize from there, as you have to cross things off, potentially.
Okay, other questions? Ms. Rosenberg, when will there be a, an opportunity for the public to review the Seventh Street Greenway and have input on that?
Yes, soon. I'll need an update, and I can find one. I know the survey is a first step, so the plan is to understand where the actual, we can look at, elevate and get an idea about where the right-of-way boundaries are, but the purpose would be to understand the limitations more. My understanding is a goal of that project is to not purchase right-of-way. There might be small amounts, but not, not, not 10 feet.
And there'll be an opportunity for public comment at that time?
There will be some public meetings and stakeholder, I guess I don't want to say plural, I don't know. I know the plan is to have a public meeting and some stakeholder meetings as well.
Will it go before the Plan Commission, or who?
No.
Where will it be approved? By staff?
Yes.
Okay.
The transportation part of Plan and Transportation does maintain a page of current projects, and then publicizes meetings for those projects as well, and tries to keep it up to date on there. So, that's something we can check in on the timeline as well.
Okay. Councilmember Mr. Baum?
Just following up, what about, is there a reduction in parking, and, and what's the number of reduction in parking? Is there just going to be parking on one side? Is there going to be parking at all if it doesn't fit? What is the plan?
So right now, we're working from a conceptual plan, and then deciding based on what the actual right-of-way is, like what the widths are for each section, because it also varies across that corridor. It's correct that it's from the Beeline to Woodlawn. Obviously, the section from Indiana to Woodlawn has zero on-street parking. I believe Indiana to Dunn has it on one side, and the rest of it has it mainly on both sides, besides one block, half-block that has a lot of driveways. So, most likely, something will have to give. The plan is not to remove all the on-street parking, but potentially, most likely, some of the on-street parking would be displaced.
So did I understand this is really the last level of review for that plan? That it will proceed and be done by Planning and Transportation without public review?
There will be a public meeting for that plan also. Street projects don't have a requirement of going before a body, so it will be outreach to neighborhoods and businesses along the corridor specifically, but it will be posted and advertised the way we do meetings like that. For example, the 17th Street corridor, staff has done a lot to work on the redesign of that corridor, and that involved outreach to the neighborhoods and businesses along it, and advertising meetings. They did specifically outreach to those entities, and then had a public meeting with them and anyone who wanted to attend. My understanding is, it would look like that, so-
There would be a meeting where they dot, put dots down and have opinions about how the process is going, or they'll just be informed of what's happening?
I, in all honesty, just don't know the typical process for that, or the expectation of it right now. I know there's not, this is 100% what's happening, so, thanks, Scott.
I just want to, Scott Robinson, Assistant Director for Planning and Transportation. Just want to clarify the public process. As all of you know, you've been involved in different projects without the city. We've always worked with neighborhoods. There's opportunities to find out about the project, get feedback, and it just depends on where the funding's coming from, and the timing, and that's no different, excuse me, with this project. So there will be opportunity for public participation, feedback, opportunity to look at the concepts that's being proposed here, to weigh in on those things. The survey is the first step to understand the impacts and how we can manage that. So that's very typical process with all our transportation projects.
Good, thank you.
So I just want to reassure that, just because that project doesn't come before this body, there are certainly opportunities with adjacent property owners and people with the greater community to participate in those projects. And we've done that with many city projects, MPO projects, and other transportation projects that we do.
We're all familiar with that process. I'm glad to hear that's the same process.
I just wanted to reaffirm that for the community, that that's a very typical process that we do, even with projects that we work with council and the council sidewalk committee, work with adjacent property owners and neighborhood associations. So, we had, I can give you that commitment that we will do, we will be doing that.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Sanders, or Sandberg?
Sandberg, I believe.
Well, I would just like to use my final comment time then, as a public service announcement, that as you see, some of these plans, and many of them have been thought through and designed, and experts have certainly weighed in, but these do impact real lives. Real people with real businesses and real needs for their individual modes of transportation. And so, for everyone out there, I'm sure Kona is, is well apprised, but if you see a project in this plan that looks like it is going to infringe upon you in any way, you've got to get the word out, and you've got to get people to these meetings. And I know sometimes we can be a little, you know, we, we mean to outreach, and we mean to share with the public, oh, please come to this meeting. Not everybody can drop what they're doing and come to the meetings, but I don't think it's enough to say, well, didn't you get the memo on that? We had a public meeting and you didn't come. I think every attempt should be made to make sure that the people whose lives are going to be impacted are at the table and have an opportunity to state what their personal and professional and business outcomes and impacts are going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? I had a couple of questions, Ms. Rosenberg. One was regarding the first question about sidewalk width and allowing adequate space for anticipated cafe space, I suppose was the term. Is that, would that be better addressed next time, in terms of, under street typologies, which we'll be discussing in our next meeting? Would you rather wait till then?
I'll give a 30-second answer, and then I think it can be more in-depth. So, in chapter three, and along with the typologies and the sidewalk widths, it includes a section called, the term might be debatable, a street frontage zone, I believe. We just call it a frontage zone, and that we plan for that to be incorporated with setbacks for buildings, to provide extra space for outdoor seating. Any street that's built out will need to be creative and do that in different ways, but that we want to consider, in some cases, we do want a strong line of buildings, but we think some variation to accommodate more outdoor seating might be a good use of space as well, since our right-of-ways, especially in the core, can be a bit limited.
Okay, and we can talk specifics next time. And my other question is about, Ms. Kapler's question about resting areas, benches, and that sort of thing. That seemed, that would seem to facilitate pedestrian use if you had resting spaces. Is that considered, or is that something to consider?
I think it's something to consider. It is mentioned in terms of bus stops, but I'm not sure that we have a specific call-out along corridors. We do consider part of it, the pedestrian zone, and the green space, where we talk about furniture, we say, like, furnishings in the street zone. Generally, if someone wanted to propose, based on research, an ideal spacing, that's typically useful, too, so we can have a metric and look at that. There are communities that map seats, and just a public mapping thing, so it is, it is useful, and staff would be supportive.
Okay, great, thank you. If no other comment, then we'll move on. Thank you for your presentation this evening. Next time, which is next Wednesday at 6:30, we'll be continuing our discussion and review presentation of the transportation plan, specifically chapter three, we'll be discussing next time. So, and thank you all for attending and making your comments. It's very much appreciated. All right, let's move on to other business on our agenda. Mr. Sherman?
Yes, there are, I think, three items that I anticipate that you may want to talk about at this point in your agenda. I don't know what order you want to take them up. There may be more items. I think the first one is, I've been seeing exchanges where there's some interest in support from the council regarding the hate crime legislation being proposed by the governor. And, one of a sense of what you have in mind, we have a packet going out Friday that really does limit what you might be able to do, but I want to have a sense of what you would, what do you envision for the council in that regard? There's a possible letter. There's a joint statement, possible resolution. So, that's one. I think we have a disclosure of a conflict of interest, and I think you, as president, may have an assignment or two. And lastly, council members could use this occasion to bring other matters that they want to raise before, we usually talk about this sort of thing, which would be in two weeks.
Okay, so let's take the, the first item, which regards the possible joint statement between the city council, the administration, the city administration, and the Chamber of Commerce, in support of the urging of Governor Holcomb to the state legislature to enact hate crime legislation. We, I understand that we have a window where we would be able to have a, either a resolution or a letter. However, we don't know the form in which it takes, do we, yet? Mr. Sherman, we haven't had a response yet from the administration if they've already composed a statement.
I, I thought this might be occasion where one or another council member might share their ideas, or what they've learned, what they have in mind, and we can go from there. I, again, am concerned that we have a very short window to get something out by this Friday, and that if, that's something, if it's a resolution, it would need to go out by this Friday. If it's some other, other thing, like a letter, I think we have more time. But I do want to hear from you what you want, so we can make sure that- But I do want to hear from you what you want, so we can make sure that staff meets your needs.
Okay. Let's have a little discussion on this then. Councilmember Chopra?
Yes, I'm in favor of a joint letter like we did for the Friends of Lake Monroe. I thought that was effective. I don't think it will be any surprise to anyone that the City Council supports hate crime legislation. And so I, I don't see it as something that needs to be debated in, at length or take up too much time. I think just a, a letter of support would be good.
Okay. Very good. Councilmember Sandberg?
I think in the interest of time, I agree that a letter is probably our quickest route. We do have some language that we can echo from other communities that have done this. And I think ultimately, for this to have maximum impact, it would be great to have this letter join in concert with the other entities who have actually reached out to us, the Chamber and the city itself. And also, I think we should outreach the county. Again, this is a unified community that is all in favor of supporting this. And so our effort would just be one small step toward a more unified effort that I think would be more powerful than just us.
Okay. One moment, and I, I made a mistake and overlooked Clerk Bolden, who will also sign on. So it'll be a joint letter of the, of the administration, the council, Chamber of Commerce, and the city clerk, if it is a letter. And Councilmember Granger, did you have a comment?
I just want to say that I have approached the commissioners and still waiting for a response as to what, if they are planning anything or if we could do something joint.
So it may include the county commissioners as well?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I believe the Chamber is working on language, although they, the last note I received from Ann Bono at the Chamber said she was draft, they were working on a resolution, but we could rephrase it as a letter, which I agree would be more expeditious. But they, they're working on language.
Clerk Bolden, what would you like to, what do you see as the most expeditious way in which we can proceed on this?
I think I agree with Councilmember Piedmont Smith, which, if you take the language from the Chamber and put it into the form of a letter, you can get everybody to sign on it relatively quickly.
Okay. It sounds like we're getting a consensus on the letter. Is that correct? Anyone differ in that opinion, rather have a resolution? Okay. Then it sounds, Mr. Sherman, it sounds like that we'll proceed to draft a letter and we'll use, you know, we'll, we'll collaborate with the aforementioned groups and we'll have it ready by next, our next meeting on the 30th. Is that appropriate?
Yes, and please feel free to include staff on your thoughts on this in terms of, if you have further information on the, what the Chamber has done or not, we'll, we'll follow up, but any help you can provide would be appreciated.
Okay. Great. All right, we've, I think we've resolved that first item of other business. Councilmember Sandberg, would you like to submit a disclosure of conflict of interest?
Yes, I would. Thank you, President Rallo. I do need to submit for the council's acceptance, a disclosure of conflict of interest. This is a very minor conflict of interest, but I am a musician and a member of a band called the Yuktones, and we have been booked to play for the Women's History Month luncheon this year on March the 20th. And as such, there will be a very small fee that will be split four ways amongst the members of my band. And so as there is a monetary, monetary gain for myself, I do need to make that public, even though it is a very minor financial disclosure that I need to make.
All right. Is there, I think there's, we need a motion in a second to accept?
Move to accept the disclosure of conflict of interest.
Second.
Okay. Can we do it by simple affirmation or do we need a voice?
Call for voice vote.
Voice vote would be fine.
All in favor? All, uh, voice vote's fine.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you very much. And while I'm at it, if I may say, the Yuktones will be playing the Orbit Room on February the 2nd from 7 to 9, and the Bloomingdale, February 23rd from 5 to 7. We are a professional band. Thank you.
I just want to know if your groupies get in at a discount.
You'll have to, you'll have to ask after the meeting. So let's see, I would like to announce an assignment, to appoint Councilmember Volin to serve on the Trades District Garage Design Initiative.
I accept.
You do accept?
I accept.
Very good. I don't think we need a vote, do we? So long as he is a willing victim?
Your vote.
And is, any other business?
When you get to schedule, I do have some matters for your, that will take, need some action tonight or next week.
All right. But we're, we're done with other business, are we not? Are we? Okay. Let's move on then to council schedule.
I wanted to remind you that we have a council work session this Friday. I did mention it last week, same items listed, along with a declaratory resolution, tax abatement resolution for Catalent. So last time, I think I saw a show of hands of about four people can attend. Is that about where we stand today for this Friday?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Show of hands? Shall we have another show of hands? Who can attend work session this Friday?
We're down to two. Okay. There are a number of items, four of them, so I don't know whether you want to have that meeting or not. This is a chance for you to say no.
Mr. Chair, or Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask, Mr. Sherman, would it be practical to postpone that work session a week?
The legislation, it would be due next Monday, so it's a chance for you to hear about something before the legislation's filed with us. So if you'd like it the following week, we could arrange...
I'm just suggesting it as the only other opportunity that it seems to exist right now.
So we might lose the benefit of, of framing legislation, but if you want to be informed before you see it in the packet, next Friday would work, so that's a choice you have.
How do people feel about that? Would we have better attendance next Friday? Probably. I'm, I'm seeing nodding heads. You will not. Councilmember Sims? All right?
I could.
Well, this is tough. I don't want to exclude Councilmember Sims. I don't want to exclude Councilmember Sims. So I'm, I have an inclination to keep the meeting this Friday.
Okay.
And perhaps, you know, people can attend. All right. Anything else regarding schedule?
One of the items coming up is a tax abatement for Catalent that involves a declaratory resolution followed by a confirmatory resolution. In order to fit this into our schedule, I proposing that we have a, a committee of the whole on, after the regular session on February 6th and a special session before the committee of the whole on February 13th. Requesting that you consider a motion that would arrange for those two meetings.
Okay. Should we have some discussion on this? This is open to discussion? Any opinions for a motion comes? Anyone would like to make the motion?
I could restate the motion if you...
Don't be shy. I'll make the motion.
That the council hold a committee of the whole after the regular session on February 6th, and then the following week, hold a special session before the committee of the whole on February 13th.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I'm opposed.
Okay. One, one member opposed. Okay. I'm sorry, you, you say you're opposed to? Okay. To in opposition? Anyone else? Everyone else in favor? Okay. Then it carries. Are we done with that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Great. Is there a motion for recess until Wednesday, January 30th?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in recess.